All reading orders. Local call please.
Miss Spears, here. Mr. Bennet?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Chaucie?
Here.
Mr. Custer?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Lugo?
Here.
Mr. Stavorski?
Here.
Mr. Woleski?
Here.
Stand. Blood pleats. Blood pleats distributed by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for both sides, please. Thank you. First action is to request approval of the minutes. Resolve Pancress Board of School Directors approve the following minutes from February 5th of the special voting meeting, February 5th of the school board work session, and February 12th of the school board voting.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried. Next, under item four, presentation, we have Cambridge Springs High School student representative.
Hello, my name is Ella Morant and I'm here to update you on what is happening at Cambridge Springs. Two weeks ago, students participated in Business Week. Business Week is one week out of our normal scheduled classes where students are put into teams to create market and run their own businesses. Students are each given a role in their teams, like CEO and CFO. It all worked toward the final competition day on Friday. CSHS businesses include Wave, Clarity, Pack Tech, and Outside the Box. After a series of competitions, Clarity came out on top in one of the closest competitions yet. Thank you to ACES, all of the Business Week sponsors, and Mrs. Schultz as coordinator for making Business Week possible. Seniors Audrey Bullock and Penny Lehner created a video to highlight this event and it can be viewed on the CSHS media YouTube. Several CSHS STEM students participated in the teams competition last month. The teams competition is a test of STEM knowledge through solving real-world engineering problems by writing an essay, solving math problems, and building out of the limited materials. Results are not out yet, but we wish the students good luck. Journalism and Yearbook Junior Kaylin Aster will travel to Penn State main campus next month to compete in the Pennsylvania Journalism State Competition. She's preparing herself for the competition in class and we wish her good luck next month. Students in high-level math classes will travel to Edinburgh University to participate in Pi Day this Thursday. During Pi Day, students will compete in several math challenges to expand their knowledge. Recently, several members of Allegheny enrichment program traveled to the By Hand Theater in Pittsburgh to see the musical Grease. This was a wonderful opportunity for our students. This week, the leadership council will be reaching out to businesses in and around the community for prom aid. Congratulations to CSHS wrestler Campbell Manross for competing in the junior high girls wrestling state competition. She finished with three wins and two losses. Congratulations to Brody Beck for competing in state wrestling. Brody came out with two wins and two losses and was just one match away from meddling. Our boys basketball team fought hard battle in the first round of the AA double A states playoffs against West Shamokin Wolves. Making a high comeback from being down by seventeen to two, the boys' season sadly came to an end with the final score of forty-six to forty-eight. Congratulations to the boys and Coach Leandro for an outstanding season. Laying in front of you is the most recent addition of the pitchwork, the Valentine's Edition. The March St. Patrick's Day edition comes out this Friday. Feel free to check it out and keep up with your social media, Cambridge Speaks. We appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sagertown High School?
Hello, my name is Zorian Edwards and I'm here to update you on what is happening at Sagertown High School. Sagertown sports are doing well. Freshman Mylan Harrison placed sixth at the PJW States for junior high boys wrestling. Junior Carter Beck reached one hundred career wins for wrestling during sectionals and placed eighth in the one hundred and forty, wow, one hundred and fourteen pound weight bracket for PIA double A state championships. Senior Casey Muck placed fourth in the one hundred and thirty pound weight bracket in the PIA double A state championships for girls wrestling. This would make her the first female wrestler at Sagertown to do so. Sophomore Leah Sample reached fifty career wins for girls wrestling and placed eighth in the one hundred and eighteen pound weight bracket in the PIA double A state championships for girls wrestling. For those who don't know, Sagertown has a co-op agreement with Meadville when it comes to swimming. That being said, senior Skylar Bland placed second in District Ten AAA and will be competing against four other Crawford County students at Bucknell University for swimming states this week. Good luck, Skylar. All winter sports were recognized during our winter assembly on February twenty-third. Key Club made their introduction ceremony happen February twenty-second. Advisors are Ms. Bridger and Marlene Jenkins. Officers include President Joel Jackson, Vice President Travis Peters, Treasurer Phelan McRight, and Secretariat Sierra McCartney. For more information, you can take a look at our Panther Press media. The Sagertown IQ team has been revived by Mr. Brenneman. The club left without an advisor last year has been given a new advisor and is preparing for Pancress IQ, which will be held in May. Student council held their second blood drive this school year on March seventh. Student turnout was thirty-one total. Thank you to those who gave blood and all who made this event happen. Senior Travis Peters started a Teacher of the Month program in order to give more recognition to our teachers and staff here at Sagertown. Seniors Natalie Sleet and Zorian Edwards aim to paint a mural in the school building as a senior project. They released a Google form to all seniors to see if they would like to help. Donating materials and time are something seniors can do to help with this project. Steve Stats, a local artist, painted a beautiful mural in the downstairs main hallway, now accompanied by signs made by Senior Levi Connolly and Mr. Nehey. We would like to thank all of these wonderful people for their contributions to our school building. The Sadie Hawkins Dance took place on Saturday, March ninth. This dance was planned and organized by student council representatives Claire Barickman and Camden Jovik. Thank you for your hard work and effort. Business Week has started at Sagertown. Our coverage will be available on our media on Friday. Seniors Natalie Sleet and Zorian Edwards and Junior Kaylee Reynolds will compete at Penn State Baron on April third in separate journalistic categories. Good luck, journalists. The issue of the Panther Press will be released April first. This is our April Fools edition, meaning it will be completely satire. It'll be accompanied by a real edition of the Panther Press in late April. Our St. Patrick's Day podcast will be released March seventeenth and our Business Week podcast will be released on Friday. In the meantime, our staff has been releasing daily web posts, which you can find on our website and media. As always, thank you for your time. We look forward to updating you next month. In the meantime, follow us on our socials at the Panther Press SHS.
Thank you. Next, we have G A A representative, Ms. Miller.
Good evening. Good evening to our community members, students, staff, and board members of the great Pancress School District. I am Debbie Miller, speaking on behalf of over two hundred teachers and educational specialists in our district. As I often do, I come to you this evening asking you to join me in remembering what is outstanding about our schools in Pancress. As the student representatives have stated, we have had great student successes in both academics and athletics. While I won't list them again, all of those accomplishments recognize the students' efforts, but they also show that they stood on the shoulders of giants in their families, communities, and the professionals behind them. Which brings me to this. We have an outstanding group of professionals in Pancress and some of this body of talent and commitment have made the decision to retire. Saying that these individuals exit will leave a void in Pancress is probably the biggest understatement ever. Let me share what we will be missing. First, Teresa Douglas, MHS alumni and longstanding English teacher, who led our district through the era of state assessments, pushing for higher and higher achievement at MHS. Dave Miller, Sagertown graduate of nineteen eighty-five. Math was his business and softball his passion. In the beginning years of assessments, he was instrumental in a CSHS ten-year AYP, for old people like me that know what that is. Adequate yearly progress, meaning ten years in a row. I think we were the only high school in Crawford County to have such an achievement. Third, William Hetrick, or as I like to call him Bill, another Cambridge alumni turned expert in the ALA classroom and a pillar that the CSHS, I'm sorry, cross-country program was built upon. Stephen Schultz, the chemistry teacher that no one will forget. And I might be partial because he took a ninth-grade girl, who I may or may not be related to, and opened her eager mind to chemistry. And now she is Dr. Alexandria Miller, a pharmacist. Mark Rose, Maplewood, known for his scientific mind, but remembered for his caring for students through the SAP program at MHS, an unsung hero for struggling students. Diana Ferris, a Cambridge graduate, excuse me, who returned to her home, raised her family, and poured love and support into our second and fourth graders. Again, I might know how she loved someone in my own household, someone who learning came difficult for. It was always about the kids for her. And Mary Groschner, also returning to her Maplewood roots. She was one of our, and is one of our outstanding nurses, who only cared for generations of students and families in Maplewood, but also led our district as the lead nurse. Please join me in applauding with our deepest appreciation for their service to this district. And to add to all of this, tonight we hear about a new leader of Pancress. The person named tonight has the ominous task of filling this void and moving the district forward. So what advice do I give? I would do what any wise person would do and I would think of what my Grandma Hazel would say. She'd say, "Don't throw the baby out with the bathwater." Don't come to Pancress and think that small means less for our students. Why not rethink the course of study and consider what new or eliminated offerings we could bring back? Where did theater arts go? Or how about CAD? How about forensics? Or public speaking? Or, for all students, K to twelve, how about libraries? Can we bring back a love of books and learning? Can we look for additional grants to bring STEM programs to expand the boundaries of our young minds? At the risk of sounding negative, which I'm trying not to be, but let's look for ways to expand or re-expand back to some of our glory days. Also, don't think that small is bad. Instead, celebrate and even advertise our size and the benefits of small class size, athletic and activity participation advantages. My nieces and nephews in Raleigh, North Carolina graduated twelve hundred students per class. My nephew was cut from the basketball team as a ninth grader because they don't take point guards under six foot in ninth grade. Fast forward, he proved them wrong and he ended up going into college and playing for NC State Division One basketball as a point guard. But think of the countless other stories that don't end that way. The story is different in Pancress for our students. We have kids who get chances to excel, to try out their leadership skills, and have learning experiences like almost nowhere else. So as we go forward into this new era in Pancress, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Take the time to see what is good, polish it, and bring new life to our district. Thank you.
Next, we have citizens' comments. There are no registered citizens at this time, so now we have two minutes for any citizens that are not registered on agenda items on. Number one. Go on twice. Alright, move on. Item six, superintendent appointment. Resolve that the Pancress Board of School Directors shall elect or approve a properly-qualified district superintendent to serve a term of three to five years from a time usually agreed upon by the duly-elected superintendent and the Board of School Directors.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Before we go into the vote, I'm going to play Mr. Whitman. Okay, sorry.
Thank you for having me on. No, I just wanted to thank Brad from the IU5. We spent countless hours doing the search and I was privileged to be the chair of the search committee and it was a pleasure working with Brad and his staff. As many of you know, in the community I am, I enjoy professional, my day, this is my main gig. So it was really, I was very pleased with the entire process. It was handled professionally, it was handled confidentially, and I'm telling you, we spent countless hours, you know, evenings away from our families, trying to make the best decision for this district. And I am very pleased that Sean is here tonight and Brad is here tonight, so I just wanted to thank them for all the time that they put in as well. And the other community members, Allison, Randy, so thank you.
I'll take a minute as well. Thank you, Mr. Whitman and your staff, for the time that you put in and guided our team. And I also would like to thank our team, Randy and Allison and Teresa. Like she said, countless hours for putting into this and we had to keep everything strictly confidential and it was handled very professionally and I want to thank you all. Any other comments? This time I'd like to... Do we need to vote on it first? Okay. Local call, please.
Miss Spears?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Chaucie?
Yes.
Mr. Custer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Lugo?
Yes.
Mr. Stavorski?
Yes.
Mr. Woleski?
Yes.
Motion carried. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Whitman and he can make the introduction for the new superintendent.
I'm going to turn this way. So thank you, Pancress Board members, and thank you for all of you that are here tonight. This is pretty special because this is where everything started. It was kind of ironic when they said that the board meeting was going to be here this evening, because this is really where I first met with the board to outline the process and what it would look like. I think that was back in November, December. So it was a very lengthy process, but it was a very well-done process and I think all of these members up here deserve a round of applause for their time and their commitment to this, because they have one job as a school board and that is to hire and fire the superintendent of the district. So that's meaningful that you saw tonight a nine-o vote for the gentleman that I'm going to introduce and turn over here to say a few words, but Mr. Sean Ford returns to Crawford County and this signifies a homecoming accompanied by deep roots in the area, an extensive experience and a steadfast commitment to education. With an upbringing, his first eighteen years of his educational career spent in the Crawford County School District, Mr. Ford possesses a profound understanding of the community's needs and aspirations. Over his twenty-five-year career in education, it has included roles as the superintendent of the Purchase Line School District and currently the assistant superintendent of DuBois Area School District. Mr. Ford has consistently demonstrated dedication to educational excellence and student achievement. And it's my honor and my privilege to introduce to you the next superintendent of Pancress, Mr. Sean Ford. Good evening, everyone, to the board and to everyone in the audience. Before I get into the opportunity, I want to start where it's most important and the bedrock of everything I do, and that's to my support for my wife Beth and our children, because they're the ones that are there on the weekends when I'm worrying about school business or we're talking education and she's not an educator until one in the morning and I'm worrying about everything, so thank you. Okay. So I just want to start and first of all, express my deepest gratitude to the Pancress School District, to the staff, the students, the community, and for the board entrusting me with this incredible honor. I'm going to stop here and I'll get off script. Debbie, what you said there is one of the reasons that I even applied to come back and that is the smallness of the district that I'm familiar with. And so when you said that, that resonates with me and so thank you for those words. Okay? As I step into this role of superintendent of Pancress, I'm aware of that rich legacy, that excellence that takes place. And I remember as a principal at Crawford Central, looking up and seeing all those test scores that were so well-done at Pancress and saying, "Hey, I don't know if we're ever going to catch them." And so I remember, I have nothing but positive thoughts from academic, athletics, the arts of everything in Pancress and what's here. So that's one of the draws of coming back. And so together, my hope is that we can build a strong foundation of those who came before us and also while embracing the innovation and change and progress that our students need in the twenty-first century. So I'm eager to get here, to collaborate with each and every stakeholder in the district. I want to do a lot of learning. I want to do a lot of listening before I do much leading. And so I want to hear from various groups and I'll work with the board to look at a way, the best way to go about that from the community. And I'll be meeting with focus groups throughout the district. I want to meet with students and I want to, like I said, I want to do a lot of learning and listening. And so I'm aware of the road ahead. We'll present challenges. There's no doubt we're going to, and we'll take those on one at a time and we'll look square in the eye and we'll figure a way forward. So once again, I thank you for this opportunity. I'm deeply honored to serve as your superintendent and I look forward to working alongside each and every one of you and I look forward to working with your board. Thank you for your confidence in me tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Ford, and welcome aboard. Okay, on to item seven, education report. There will be an education committee meeting on Tuesday, March nineteenth, at six-thirty at the administration board office. First item for approval, resolve that the Pancress Board of School Directors approve the student travel as listed for the MHS ban.
So moved.
Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? On there, the estimated cost at is four hundred and forty-nine dollars. It appears that it was not typed into the agenda there, so. Hearing done. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say. Motion carried. Okay, next item, resolve that the Pancress Board of School Directors approve to operate and staff the 2024 extended school year program as needed.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried. Resource list, policy one oh nine. Resolve that the Pancress Board of School Directors approve the attached resources and materials in accordance with policy one oh nine. And these are the total solar eclipse teacher resources provided by Penn State Baron.
So moved.
Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried. Policy one oh nine for speakers. Resolve that Pancress Board of School Directors approve the following resources and materials in accordance with policy one oh nine. Speakers is listed. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. And then also, resolve that Pancress Board of School Directors approve the attached resources and materials in accordance with policy one oh nine, the BitSlab app.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried. A A D Y program. Resolve that the Pancress Board of School Directors approve the attached twenty-four, twenty-five school year alternative education for disruptive youth agreement with Bethesda Lutheran Services at eighty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-seven.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried. Resolve that Pancress Board of School Directors approve the attached twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five elementary and secondary programs of study.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? I just have one. I scrolled through there and I didn't see anything listed for civics in there. I don't know if it's kind of buried in one of the... Civics is in with the government and economics course and then the civic standards are covered throughout the different grade levels as units or lessons within each of the social studies courses. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried. Resolve that the Pancress Board of School Directors approve the attached affiliation agreement with Penn West University.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried. Resolve that Pancress Board of School Directors approve the E. Grant signature resolution for Canafinae.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried. Donation. Resolve that Pancress Board of School Directors approve to accept a donation of eclipse glasses for all Pancress students from Penn State Baron University in collaboration with Gannon, Penn West, and Mercyhurst Universities.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I want to thank everyone for the donations to Penn State and it's really awesome that they're generous and give our students a chance to have these glasses, so.
Yep, and the university, local universities are doing a lot and promoting with the eclipse because it's a rare thing that happens. The resources that we approved just earlier in here are, there's some great resources that teachers can use in the classroom. So it's going to be a spectacular thing for kids to see and the adults, so. On top of that, we will be addressing the schedule for that day in the very near future as to our early dismissal. It's on our calendar as an early dismissal, so that information and specific schedule will come out to all the buildings and all the students, so hope for that next week or so. Any other comments or questions? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried. Item L, school calendar. Resolve that Pancress Board of School Directors approve the attached school year twenty-four, twenty-five calendar.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried. Next item, student transportation. Resolve that Pancress Board of School Directors approve the listed contract and student transportation drivers.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say.
Opposed, say. Motion carried.
Section nine, financial report. Just, sorry.
Announce the meeting? Did you announce the meeting tomorrow?
I'll skip it over. Yeah, sorry, I got a little ahead of myself there. Tomorrow, the district is holding a joint facilities and finance committee meeting at 6:30 PM in the boardroom at the Sager Town District Office to discuss facility projects as well as upcoming budget items. Sorry about that, thank you, Tim. Now on the financial report. Resolve that the Penncrest Board of School Directors approve the attached treasuries reports.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried.
Disbursements. Resolve that Penncrest Board of School Directors approve the payment of the attached disbursements.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried.
Resolve that Penncrest Board of School Directors approve the attached budget transfers.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried.
Next item, the 2024-2025 Intermediate Unit Budget. Resolve that the Penncrest Board of School Directors approve the 24-25 Northwestern Tri County Intermediate Unit Budget in the amount of $70,091,220, and further approve the district's contribution to the General Operating Fund 10 and the School Improvement Service Fund 20 budgets for the 24-25 fiscal year in the amount of $53,649.17.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried.
Next item, food service management company agreement. Resolve that Penncrest Board of School Directors approve the attached 24-25 Food Service Management Company Agreement and Budget with Nutritioning.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried.
Next item, school-based access program billing agreement with IU5. Resolve that Penncrest Board of School Directors approve the attached school-based access billing program with IU5 at $34,911.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried.
And finally, on the financial report. Resolve that the Penncrest Board of School Directors approve and accept a donation of a double-sided milk coler from the Pennsylvania Dairy Council for Sager Town High School.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried.
Section 10 Personnel Report. I'm going to ask for a dissent agenda on the personnel report, so requesting approval of items 10A, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
So moved. Second.
Motion in the second. Any comments or questions?
I just want to go on what Debbie Miller said about all the resignations. We're losing some great teachers to retirement. I know most of you personally, and I want to say, guys did a phenomenal job, and I wish you all the best in retirement and enjoy yourselves. And we're looking for subs. All of them.
Yeah, I want to echo what Tim said. Couple of these people were my teachers, my nurse, so sad to see them go, but they deserve to enjoy their retirement, so thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried.
Next, we have policy approval for policy 610 and 006. Resolve that Penncrest Board of School Directors approve the following policies, purchases subject to bid and meetings.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried.
Item B, Cooperative Agreement between Cambridge Springs and General McLean. Resolve that the Penncrest Board of School Directors approve a cooperative agreement with Cambridge Springs Junior Senior High School and General McLean for swimming at cost of $100.
So moved.
Second. There was a motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried.
Next item, it says, new board director new business. Next up, announcements. The board met for executive session on February 28th, March 4th, and March 11th for personnel negotiations, litigation, and student issues. Up next, we have citizens' comments on non-agenda items. There were no registered citizens. Are there any non-registered citizens for non-agenda items that would like to speak?
Debbie Miller, Rockdale Township. I just wanted to, it is a non-agenda item, but I am still probably speaking partly as a resident, but also as the president of the Teachers Association. I just want to publicly thank Mr. Newman and Kristen and their associates for carrying us through a difficult time. The board also stepped up, and we got a new committee, but they have spent countless hours. I think pretty much they're tired of seeing me, but they really have stepped it up in the absence of a superintendent to... Settling the contract is one thing, but all the little things, I guess we'll call them after, have been tremendous, and they've been nothing but cordial. We've talked on the phone during my lunchtime and all kinds of things to get it done, and I just want to publicly appreciate them. Thank you.
Hi, Annie Schmidt, Caswell Township. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge Tim Brown and Ray DeSkworski. If you guys were aware, we had a state playoff game this Saturday at Cambridge High School. At 10 o'clock, there was a panicked call from the coach saying, "There's water on the floor, the ceiling's leaking." Called the A D, called facilities engineer, called maintenance supervisors, and we were panicked. We thought this game was going to be moved, the other team was en route. Quick phone call to Tim, quick phone call to Randy, said, "Can you help?" They got up there, they assessed the situation, got a local businessman to fix the thing, and we were able to hold on to a game at home. My son is a senior, that was the last game he had, so from the bottom of my heart, thank you both very much. We couldn't have done it without you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Delores Hale, Cambridge Springs. I just wanted to say, I've been a volunteer business advisor for Business Week for 13 years, and I really appreciate Penncrest offering this program to our students. I think it is one of the best outside programs you can bring into our school, and I really appreciate you continuing to do that. I know it's a disruption, you have to get student teachers, that kind of thing. It really does make a difference, and I invite you all to come. Sager Town is the last school, I think, in our district that's having Business Week this week. You can come on Friday, watch their teams compete in the stockholders competition, the advertising and marketing competition, and the trade show competition. It's really something to see. They really run a business in one week, and it's phenomenal. Thank you, Allison, for showing up at Cambridge, I appreciated that. She came and watched some of the competitions, and if you would always consider keeping Business Week at Cambridge Springs, it's really the best program I think you can offer our students. And I want to welcome Superintendent Sean Ford to our school district. Working forward to talking to you and visiting you. Thank you.
What time Friday is that?
It's all day Friday, usually. Is it on? Okay, usually they start the competitions around 9:00 in the morning. They have stockholders going on at the same time they have advertising and marketing.
Is it the high school or is it...
It's at the high school, correct? Yep. Yeah, I can't speak from Sager Town, I'm familiar with Cambridge. I've judged at Sager Town. So, but there's four competitions altogether. One is competing with the financial end, and they'll know who, they kind of get an idea who's ahead on that, because they post the scores on those, the return on net assets. However, the stockholders and the advertising marketing competition and trade show are all held that day. They're all usually held before noon, and it's pretty intense, and it's pretty impressive what the students can do in one week. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Turn it back to you.
Do we do district remarks?
What's that?
Do we do district national?
They're a repeat of what all the...
Oh, okay.
Everything.
That's fine.
I'm not going to say everything over again.
Did we do anything live on the line?
Yep. So all we've been doing recently is doing comments that we pull from our social media feeds to share at the meetings. And our student representatives this evening did such a wonderful job, that they covered everything that we had on our district list. Some of the highlights that we had on there, though, the top of the list we had is, we had over 50 students donate blood at blood drives at our high schools this year, which again, given back to the community. Last week, we talked about the items that kids were doing out in the community. This is just another way that our Penncrest students give back. Also, the other piece that is a really great thing that we did this year, this was our inaugural year for our Unified Bocce Team at Mapwood High School. They made it all the way to the regional championship at Geneva College, and they lost a heartbreaker by a score of 5-4 in their very first year down at Geneva College. Those kids did a great job, they made it through sectionals or league up here, and they got to take the trip down to Geneva, and it was the full deal down there. I think Ms. Feely was able to go down and watch the kids, and they had multiple courts set up, and for being the first year and trying to put it together and get coaches and stuff, they did a really good job. So that's something, again, that we should be proud of as Penncrest. And we will hear next month about our student athletes that made it to the states, we'll be recognizing them at the April meeting. So we had the wrestlers from Sager Town make the states, and then as well as our couple basketball teams, so we will be doing a recognition in April for that, like we do every year with certificates and recognizing those folks. There is one more, sorry. I said I wasn't going to repeat, but I'm repeating one. Finally, we don't really recognize a lot with the elementary students and our teachers there, but again, on our social media sites, one of the things that popped out as I was looking through the past few weeks is, at Mapwood Elementary School, we had kindergarten teachers working with their students to explore force of motion with technology teacher Ms. Frazier. If you recall, a few weeks ago, Ms. Frazier put in to go to the PTC conference. She's taken some of the stuff she learned there, working with the kids, and they completed multiple hands-on activities that both had the kids excited and working with science standards at the kindergarten level, which, you know, they're not doing experiments per se, with, you know, big things, but we're growing that love for science through those programs. So again, Ms. Frazier going for the professional development, coming back and bringing it back to the kids, and those things are super positive that you don't really hear a lot from our schools. So other than that, I just remind everybody, please visit each school's website or official social media sites for even more updates and happenings throughout the district and community. All six of our schools post stuff frequently as well as their websites, so please look there to see some great pictures of our kids in action. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried.
Now on the financial report. Resolve that the Penncrest Board of School Directors approve the attached treasuries reports.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried.
Next item, the 2024-2025 Intermediate Unit Budget. Resolve that the Penncrest Board of School Directors approve the 24-25 Northwestern Tri County Intermediate Unit Budget in the amount of $70,912,220, and further approve the district's contribution to the General Operating Fund 10 and the School Improvement Service Fund 20 budgets for the 24-25 fiscal year in the amount of $53,649.17.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions?
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried.
Next item, food service management company agreement. Resolve that Penncrest Board of School Directors approve the attached 24-25 Food Service Management Company Agreement and budget with Nutritioning.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions?
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried.
Next item, the 2024-2025 Intermediate Unit Budget. Resolve that the Penncrest Board of School Directors approve the 24-25 Northwestern Tri County Intermediate Unit Budget in the amount of $70,912,220, and further approve the district's contribution to the General Operating Fund 10 and the School Improvement Service Fund 20 budgets for the 24-25 fiscal year in the amount of $53,649.17.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions?
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried.
Next item, the 2024-2025 Intermediate Unit Budget. Resolve that the Penncrest Board of School Directors approve the attached treasuries reports.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Motion carried.
Next item, the 2024-2025 Intermediate Unit Budget. Resolve that the Penncrest Board of School Directors approve the 24-25 Northwestern Tri